Call to order, please. Tonight's meeting, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Durkin.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Novak.
Here.
Here. All right, let's get started with recognitions.
Good evening, our board members and community members present. The first athlete today I would like to recognize is currently on vacation thousands of miles away. Those are his folks telling me today. But I want to congratulate our All-State Track and Field Athlete Jack O'Brien, who in the 800-meter run downstate tied the 42-year-old school record. If you're watching, Jack, your diploma will be here. I'll make sure you get it.
Your diploma? You got a diploma? Did you get a diploma?
No.
Certificate, okay.
The next athletes I would like to recognize are members of the Conference Championship Softball Team. The first athlete I would like to recognize is Emily Oregon, who earned second team All-State.
That's your memory. How's that right in the shirt?
Thank you.
Next, I would like to recognize our first-team All-Stater Zoe Levine. And I would like to invite head coach Doug Schultz for a few words. Coach?
Gabe, good evening. I want to thank the Board of Ed and the district to invite us to talk about two great softball players. I also want to thank Mr. Novak for coming to our championship regional game and Dr. Skinkis for attending our semifinal regional game. It was great to see the support from both of you, so thank you very much. I'm going to start talking about Emily Oregon, the Bradley DePaul or Bradley University-bound softball player. Emily was our shortstop for four years, and it's amazing to see Emily grow over those four years in her leadership. Some just amazing stats that she gave to us. Out of these four years, she finished with 157 hits, with 20 of those, 21 of those being doubles and 15 triples and 24 home runs for her career. She finished with a 416 average, so that is somebody that showed power and average at the same time with 115 RBIs and 117 runs scored. So Emily is definitely leaving us as one of our best players ever. Unfortunately, she missed the record for triples by one, so the third-base coach didn't call her from second to third a couple extra times. It's definitely on me, so I apologize for that. But I want to say thank you to Emily. We are hoping that the Oregon's would give us more daughters for the program, but they just finally ran out. So we honored you and thank you for everything that you've done for the program. One other thing, Emily is a three-time All-Conference Player, which I forgot to mention, so amazing, amazing career. And then for Zoe Levine, DePaul-bound softball player. Zoe, first-team All-State. Zoe is leaving us as one of the most profound softball hitters in the program. She leaves us with 156 hits, 56 doubles for her career, so that eclipses the old record of 48. She had 19 doubles last year as a junior. That's the new record for a single season. She had 18 this year. That's not my fault for not calling. She finishes with 35 career home runs, which beats the old number at 29. And then she finishes with the career batting average of 456. The old record was 454, so she now has four records of her RB's history. And RB softball has got a proud history, so it's great to have somebody of that caliber to come through us. Again, growth. She's our four-year catcher. She was a four-year All-Conference Player and the 2024 Player of the Year for the MSC. So congratulations, Emily.
Zoe, Emily Coach Jerk, can we have a picture, please? Ladies and gentlemen.
Coach.
In front of the world facing me? Okay. Parents, if you want to, please join me, okay? For those bad boys.
Your certificate.
They have All-State. All right, here we go. I'll go this way. Here we go. Three, two, one. I got mine.
Congratulations.
And our board members, that concludes the recognitions.
Mr. Schultz, before you leave, I just want to take a moment. Mr. Schultz has recently informed us that he's looking to step down as the head coach of the softball program. And I believe you've had it for eight years?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. I knew it was getting close to 10, so Doug, I want to thank you for taking on that position and thank you for rebuilding that program and giving kids an opportunity. Every summer, we see you out there running the summer camps, and so big shoes to fill, but I want to personally thank you, and I know the board wants to thank you as well.
All right. Next up on our agenda, we have the superintendent's report. No, no president's report. She never has one.
Superintendent's report. Thank you to everyone who helped plan and set up and participate in a successful commencement ceremony for the class of 2024. Congratulations to everyone on completing another great school year. Tonight, the board will take action on the tentative budget for FY '25. Please remember that final budget will be approved in September, so Dr. Smetana and I will regularly update the Board of Education throughout the next few months before the final adoption. The June 30th actuals will be added to the tentative budget by August. The way the Fourth of July holiday falls this year, people being, offices being closed at the Township Treasurer's Office, we will not have them available for the July meeting packet. The administration has updated the District Goals Progress Monitoring Document with new SMART goals for the '24-'25 school year. Again, this is only a draft. It's included in the packet tonight for the board to review and discuss, and I would imagine that will carry into the July meeting as well when all seven board members are present. Reminder, special board meeting on Tuesday, June 25th, 7:00 p.m. The review and approve bids for Culinary Lab and the District High School are on summer hours, 7:30 to 3:30 in the event parents need to get ahold of somebody in the office. Facilities, Dr. Smetana will provide an update on the Culinary Lab project tonight, and no other advisory council is met since our last meeting. That concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. Is this the part where I ask if anyone has any questions? And if not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We're actually going to move it around a little bit. We're going to give Elizabeth Hennessy an opportunity to get here. So Dr. Freitas, can I ask you to start on your principal's report?
Yeah, of course, Madam Vice President. First, I would like to invite Assistant Principal Mr. Dave Manning, Deans Kara Weinberg and Deans Alberto Hockes, who will present the second semester school coaching activity data report. Thank you, Dees, for being here during your summertime, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Tonight, we're here to present out the attendance suspension and engagement data from our second semester. To assist with the presentation, we have our two deans, Ms. Weinberg and Mr. Hockes here as well. Starting with the first report is our attendance report, which shows our year-end average of our daily attendance at 92.3%. This percentage is similar to the attendance rate from last school year. I should mention that our overall attendance percentage is accumulation of the entire school year. However, the percentage may look a little bit different when it's submitted to the state as it takes our highest three-month averages. So typically, on our score report card, you will see that increased on there. So similar percentages as the previous school year. And the second chart down from that, we look at our tardy averages. It is per period, per day. If you look at the total, it is 13.32, which is actually down from last semester or last year at this time, which is great. So we're seeing an improvement of kids in class, and that's what we strive for. If you look at the months, our spread on our highest month average would be 17. That's in March. Shorter month there, so you're going to see a little bit of a higher percentage of students. And that is per period, per day in March. And then April starts to go back down a little bit there. So we're doing a lot better with, I think, our numbers. And our goal this year, especially for tardy students, was to meet them in our lunch periods and to talk with them and have the deans have conversations about, hey, what's going on? How can we assist? And what supports do you need? And those are ongoing conversations. I think our students are getting really accustomed to hearing their names called over the PA in lunch, but it's a great way to connect with students and an opportunity for us to get in touch with our students there. So those numbers are going down and will continue as we're post-pandemic here, continue to support students in getting to school and getting to class on time.
We also wanted to share out some data, kind of getting into these numbers in terms of attendance, why are kids missing school? I think schools across the state are working to engage not just students, but their families as well to make sure that students are present in a post-pandemic world. So you'll see down at the bottom of the report that there are some data on mental health days. So for this year specifically, you see kind of a nice little trend with our freshmen to our seniors. Our seniors are taking the most mental health days. That is to be expected. Mental health days were first instituted by the state in January of '22. So if you look to your right, you'll see data from the '22-'23 school year as well. Where only 318 students took days compared to this year, where 540 students took days. Just so everybody's aware and familiar with this, legislation, students are allowed five days per year to take as mental health days. So more students are taking days, which is a good thing. And Student Services does follow-up with all those students after each mental health day is taken. In the next report, you'll see, we wanted to make sure that there was data that compared pre-COVID numbers. We're constantly asked this question, you know, what did attendance look like pre-COVID versus post-COVID? And so we have a breakdown of that here. Obviously, in the 2018-2019 data, mental health days did not exist. And so that's accounted for in the chart as well. But some interesting takeaways from this. So sick days are up a little bit, but not as much as you might expect post-COVID. What's really up is the personal days. So more than three times the amount of students are taking personal days in the '23-'24 school year versus the '18-'19 school year. Additionally, more than two times the amount of students are going to doctor's visits during the school day as well. So we're seeing those two numbers really shoot up post-COVID. Vacation days are up as well slightly, not as much as the other two. But really what we're seeing account for our significant attendance days are those personal days and the doctor's days as well. And then if you look down at the bottom, there is just a breakdown visually of what the '23-'24 absence categories were. Primarily, we are seeing both excused and unexcused. Sick days take up about half of our days. And then our other big hitter categories are excused, unexcused, personal, and then excused, unexcused doctor visits.
And Dees, to go with that, when we looked at those numbers, I don't know, or I think that, we think that before the pandemic, when people would call in for those personal days, they would give a specific reason, and we had a bunch of categories with that, which is, and now they're saying personal days. Parents are saying, families are saying, it's just a personal day, whatever it is, without any specific reason. So I think that's another reason why that number's so much larger than previous years.
So we're looking at the doctor visits. That number's like triple now.
It's significant.
So two questions. Is that a statewide? And is that something that as a state, we want to kind of work at bringing that back down?
Yeah, so again, I think schools across the state are seeing dips in attendance numbers. You know, just kind of regionally, LT, Argo, all of those schools are seeing a drop. And now that Illinois Report Card is reporting on chronic truancy and chronic absenteeism, we can see all of those numbers. So yes, there is a drop in attendance post-COVID, and we are working on improving that. I'll get into that when we talk about new initiatives, but there will be part of the residency process. We will have a specific attendance table where each family will have to pass through and speak with Alberto and I. And it's not meant to be punitive. It is nothing like that, but it's just a friendly reminder that students learn best when they're in a desk in a building in front of a teacher, right? We are lucky to have platforms like Google Classroom and SchoolAg, but those are not our teachers. That's not our educators. That's just a housing platform for, you know, worksheets, tests, things like that. Students need to be here. So I'll get into that a little bit more, what we're doing for residency.
But it's also important to note that with those doctor, you know, when parents are calling in, I mean, they're going to the doctor, right? They're excused, so they're communicating with us anytime they're doing that, so, you know, they're doing what we ask, right?
The unfortunate is that they're, again, missing a day of school. That's a lot of days. It's interruption into the process. You know, we came off of several years of not being in class, so that urgency of, I can't keep missing, you know, we're still in that habit of just schedule.
But I also think post-COVID, doctors' offices are more limited. They don't seem to be like, my son had to go to the orthopedic doctor. He's only in the office eight to four.
Right, right. We're seeing that.
What are we going to do? And he can go in at one, like, uh, okay, well, you know.
I'm going to take that, right?
We are seeing a lot of kids, and I don't have the specific piece of data in front of me, but students returning after appointments or leaving and so not taking the entire route, which is a good thing as well. So, you know, you got to do what you got to do for appointments, but we'd love it if you would come back or if you would, you know.
Come late, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Be early.
Yeah, we had to reset the baseline with the mental health days. So students are excused five. There were a lot of five excused for the first semester, five excused for the second semester, but then also five on top of it with mental health days. So that brought everyone's number down, only in the state. But like, if you just look at the country in general, I mean, look at Google, there's about five articles that came out today about chronic truancy and absenteeism. And a lot of schools are at 30%. And I think we were at 19 or 10% or so for truancy last year, which is well below where the state was. So, you know, where we're at right now, it'll be interesting to see how this goes. I'm glad that we're consistent. We have it gone down significantly, and I think that we'll continue to do measures that we'll talk about here in a second to help our students get to class. But it's compounded only by the mental health days, by the doctor visits, but then also by anxiety, by other things that have happened throughout the pandemic that happen now to just continue to stack up. And so just go into kind of some of the measures that we have.
I have one other question. So in 2018-2019, you could not put your excuse in through Skyward. And now you can. But in Skyward, you're limited because you only get those choices. So you had said in 2018-2019, they gave more detail because they called in, they had to give that information. So I wonder if, you know, you can only, you can only work with the vehicle you have, right? So Skyward, you're limited by the options that you can. So that's another one. You say, oh, personal went way up. But people might just pick that because it's just the easiest one to pick, right?
Now, as you look at the next page, we can check out our suspension and offenses for second semester. And then we try to compare this to last year's second semester as well. So, you know, it's broken down by month as well. You got, you know, drug possession, smoking, THC vapes. 14 offenses, 14 students, no repeat offenders. So, you know, those detectors do work. Sometimes people get lucky and don't get caught, but, you know, I mean, for the most part, the nice data point there is that if it's, you know, a nice data point, it's no repeat offenders, right?
If I can just pause real quick on that. So the vape detectors were installed in October. And as we mentioned in the first semester report, they have some AI technology in there, not to track students, but to track the scent, to track the air quality and things like that. And so it's on our end to go in there and click. Once we get the report, security is then redirected to go find out what's going on in there. If they don't smell anything, if they don't locate anything, then we click false. It's a false read. And a lot of times, those sensors, when we first put them in, it was like too much wind going through there or a noise from the air dryer, things like that, or a door slamming. And so then it calibrated out. And so this semester, we saw a lower amount, which is great, but they're pretty calibrated out now. So if we do get a hit, which basically is like a sensor that goes off, security would go in there. And if they do see a student in possession, then they would come down to the dean's office, and these are the reflected numbers from that.
Yeah, for the most part, it's pretty consistent across, you know, each month, right? Two and on the average, three for upper month. Fighting incidents, so we had 12 offenses. It was really, you know, six or seven separate incidents, right? All, for the most part, isolated, right? And then, and again, no repeat offenders, right? Isolated events. Disrupting of the learning environment, or, you know, what we would call or consider bullying and intimidation. We had, again, 13 offenses, 13 students. No repeat offenders, right? If you look at last year's numbers, you know, March was a pretty heavy month. This year, there was, there was nothing in March. Weird. But again, across the board, you know, the average, right? Five, four, three. Other offenses, we got, you know, inappropriate or non-compliance behavior. The total being 44 offenses, 44 students. Again, no repeat offenders, but for the most part, and it's pretty much similar to last year. I think we had about 43 or 44 as well suspensions.
I just, you know, I think as a school, we are so fortunate to see zero gang offenses and zero weapon offenses. Every day on the radio, you just hear, you know, tragic stories in Chicago. We really are so very fortunate. You guys, you guys are on the floor, walk in the halls, talking to students. Thank you for what you do to make this a safe place to come to.
Yeah, and it's a village here. It's our teachers out in the hallways during passing periods. It's the connections, the relationships that are built through our security team. It's the conversations that we have on a daily basis with students. It's the engagement, which we'll talk about here, which is unbelievable this year. And then we saw some of that kind of firsthand from our student equity leadership team. They did a survey about culture and climate, and those questions were developed through them. And they asked our students, like, do you feel safe? Is this a place where you're engaged, is it a place where you have outlets? Do you know a trusted adult? And those responses were overwhelmingly positive. And so, yes, we do enjoy a very great environment here, but it's because of all the system supports, our staff, and everything that's included. We'll continue to work and build on that. And I'm going to be excited to share out some engagement numbers that kind of speak to that a little bit, too.
So you mentioned that trusted adult. Is that a program that, you know, because I hear that in elementary schools. Is that also something we encourage in high school to have your trusted person?
We always encourage, you know, our staff members, right, to be that trusted adult for the student, right, to follow, to engage, ask questions, build relations, get to know them, you know?
Okay.
And then we ask back, do you have a trusted adult? Because that's key. And I want to see a great majority of students do have. They could, they could name a teacher, a security cafeteria administrator, and say, we can count on them.
And our hope in the office is that we become one of those persons, you know? As much as it's, you know, kind of weird that, you know, the dean or whatever, I got suspended for this, but we do build some strong relationships with some of those kids, with actually probably all of those kids who are in our office, even if they get suspended, right? We bring them back, we, you know, have our reentry process, link them up with social work or tapestry, whatever it may be, right? But that's, we're trying to build stronger relations with those kids, the ones that we see in our office, you know?
Nice.
Hopefully, we're their trusted adult, or at least one of them, right? We go to the next page, the back page here. We, you know, we got the breakdown by race. You see some shift in numbers. You know, Hispanic population has gone up by a few students. The white population has gone down by a few students. You know, black and other, you know, or two or more races, for the most part, stayed about the same. You know, we're at 3.6% of the total of Hispanic students, 1.1% white students, 8.7% black, and 1.9. So for the most, I mean, numbers are pretty similar to what they were last year. I think we've had, we've had a few changes and some transfers and, you know, linking up special ed students who end up in our office with, you know, with our meetings, our small team meetings and problem-solving meetings. So, you know, working with them all year for the most part. What else we got here? So just a few things that we've already implemented that we're continuing. I'm not going to read them all, a few that, you know, that we use the most, right? Keeping kids in school, right? So instead of the out-of-school suspensions, there's a few things that we can do to keep them inside of the school, right? The ADA, right? Or alternative day assignment, or what was called in-school suspension, right? We use that, you know, as much as we can to keep kids here, to receive their services, minutes, whatever it is. You know, and they know they have, whether it's a case manager or whoever can work with them that day. Again, the use of vape detectors in the bathrooms, locker rooms. We got security going down there and just always, always beat up presence, right? Always having someone there. And then towards the bottom there, you know, we continue to use tapestry. Our students who are in that tapestry program build some strong relations with their advocates, so we're planning on continuing to do that, right?
We're aware of the tapestry program as the West 40 interim government agreement you approved, where we have interventionists on campus.
Also known as ALOP.
So does a student have to ask to get involved in that?
So typically, our at-risk criteria for a student who would be involved in tapestry, we would bring that student up at our small team meeting, which is our office and Student Services. Generally, we're looking at some concerning attendance behavior and some behavior, behavior. And all of that combined would create a profile for that student to then become a part of the tapestry program. And there are students who kind of advance out of tapestry program. We will have a few kids who say, you know what? We look at how much progress they've made, where we will always be a resource for them, but, you know, we can move them off the roster and make room for others. And so we determine that weekly as, you know, those students who would be eligible to be a part of that.
And this additional support, those students have multiple check-ins throughout the day. There's some wraparound support that that office does, and some family engagement things and events that they host as well. So it's been a really successful program for us here the last couple of years.
In terms of some of the attendance initiatives that we are already doing, many of you with children in the district are familiar with our five-and-10 letter. When your student reaches five absences and 10 absences, you email the letter out, just kind of stating, you know, here's where we're at. We'd like your student to be present in school. It's important. That's it. There are emails sent out daily if a student receives unverified absences. Just as a reminder, oftentimes a parent has just forgotten to reach out or, you know, email, and that's okay. We get that taken care of. We continue to meet with students who, you know, hit a certain amount of absences. And again, not as a punitive measure, but as a what do you need? How can we help you? What's going on? And those meetings are often really productive. We're able to help those families, whether it's a referral to tapestry or reaching out to the family and helping them in other ways and seeing what their needs are. So we will have attendance meetings with parents as well for kind of severe cases of truancy with students, attendance contracts, which are really more of a sit-down with everybody to say, here's how many days you've missed, here's what's on the line, right? Whether that's prom, whether that's, you know, wherever we are, we really need you in the building. We don't want to take these things away. Can we incentivize this for you? One thing that we are very excited about, and this is a new initiative with attendance this year, is that attendance table at registration, like I mentioned. Each family will receive a printout of the previous year's attendance record of their student. And in addition to that, they'll receive a letter that just kind of, two things. It outlines our attendance process, how many days you have, what the process is for calling. In an absence, it's the same letter that we distributed at the beginning of last year. And then on the flip side of that, just gives some information about why it's important to be present in the building. Freshmen, incoming freshmen, will not receive their attendance record, but through our partnership with our feeder schools, we do have a list of at-risk students. We're hoping to counsel with those families prior to the beginning of the school year when we return in August. So we're excited about that.
Questions?
Now, that was, that was really great. Maybe sometime in the future, you could have one of your tapestry graduates or something come and share that. That's, sometimes we ask, what are we doing? You know, and that's such a cool program you have that I don't think most people know about if they haven't been involved with it. But to even know it's a resource that we have, maybe have a family come and share how that was instrumental in their life and help sometime. That would be great.
Yeah, they do an alumni wall in the room. And so like all the past graduates have a picture of their cap and gown. It's really cool. Walked, distinguish, you know, what those, you know, the accomplishments that they've done. So, yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, because that's a gem that I don't think I realized how big of a program that really was. That would be nice to, you know, just hear from people who've come through and how instrumental it was.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you so much for the reports tonight. Thank you.
We're also going to do one more report. So I'm going to keep you guys here since Dan's hair plugs up. We have an engagement report to get through. And this is just this kind of like glimpse of what we had towards the end of the year in regards to activity engagements, both athletic and activity. We'll do a more in-depth, you know, report out here in the fall as well. But if you look at the engagement rate, so this would be activity and athletic participation for the entire school year, we went up 4%, so we're at 74%, which is well over our which is well over our 70% goal through the building. So we're really excited. And that's the highest percentage I've had since I've been here, you want to 10 years for next year. So I'm really excited about the amount of engagement and the amount of participation that our students are in. And looking at the extracurricular participation by grade level and splicing that out, our seniors actually were up to 71%. They're usually hovering in the 60s. So we had a really great senior class this year. The juniors, we need to work on, they're 68%. Our sophomore participation was 76, and our freshmen were amazing, at 79%. So brought us in at 74. And just looking at where we're at in the programs that we offer, this should stay consistent. And that's just a testament to our sponsors, our coaches, and all the extra work that they do to engage students and just coming up with creative and new activities and extracurricular outlets for our students. It really is a special place, like you mentioned previously. Breaking it down even further to specific extracurricular participation. And so if a student is solely in one sport, you're looking at 529 of those students. If they're solely in an activity, it would be 291 students. Sport and activity together, so if I was in art club, but I also played baseball or what have you, or music and swimming, 393. And then our nonparticipants went from 525 down to 432. So we're continuing to chip away at that. But that's a significant amount of students that we cut down and moved into more of an engaging outlet for the school year. A big part of that this year was our music department, mariachi band started, symphonic band, and then baking club came on board. And that was a monthly club where students from any grade level could just come after school. We had so many students, we had to move it into the cafeteria. We didn't have any space in our food lab or anywhere else. And so we had over 100 students that sometimes throughout the year that would just come in and want to bake in that. And we usually theme it up. So if it was Halloween, we'd do Halloween cookies, things like that. But our applied arts teachers did a great job in engaging those students. And that was a really well-run program for us this year, so. That is the engagement report. And then in regards to our plan to improve and continue the streak that we're on here is to develop a leadership committee. Going into the new conference, we've been meeting with our conference schools here the last couple of months and making sure we are integrating and understanding those bylaws and those programs. And so we want to develop a leadership committee that has activity and athletic representation that will meet on a quarterly basis. We're going to host the Upstate Eight Leadership Conference next year in the spring of '25. So we're going to bring all of our conference schools into the campus here and then bring a speaker and then have some breakout discussions, which has never happened previously in our conference. So we're really excited about that, to engage our students with other school leaders. We're going to attend the LTHS Leadership Conference in the fall and then continue our student equity leadership team and continue to expand on our activity school opportunities for engagement. So maybe do some dodgeball, maybe do some three-on-three tournaments and things like that going forward. On the athletic side, they are going to continue to work on their feeder programs, continue to look at in-house coaching and connect and make those relationships, fostering those engagement opportunities there. Continue to start a community through the Day of Service Project with our PTO and then enhance our evaluation tool. I won't speak too much on that. I know we have a new athletic director coming on board here, which he'll, you know, be ingrained with RB's traditions and kind of bring in his own as well. But that's some of the things that they are looking at here for the next year. But a lot of success in the engagement category, and then we'll report out a little bit more on that in the fall.
Do we still have, what is it, FAA or something? You know, it used to be stronger in culinary for a while, and then it started with like presentations. I mean, just such a broad, you know, many categories in that vocational.
Yeah, so FCC LA, I think they were here maybe last meeting or the meeting before, we had our highest amount of state awarded students that competed in that category, in that organization. And it's either it's like baking, it's design, it's fashion, and it's organic, of different things in the applied arts field through FCC LA. So, yeah, it's a well-run program.
So I think that also helps with our participation because it's so broad. You know, like you say, there's public speaking, there's fashion, and just so many facets in that competition.
Any questions on the engagement report?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Dr. Freitas, you'll cover the athletics summary. Dean Akas, Dean Wyper, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in on your summer hours.
Good evening again, honorable board members. I'll be presenting the spring athletic summary and pay-to-play summary. Out of the 12 spring sports, we have five teams that were conference champions. Our boys' baseball team, our girls' softball team, boys' and girls' track and field, and boys' volleyball. So I'm extremely proud of all of our conference champions, all of our athletes, and all of our coaches. And more importantly, in our coaches' philosophy of including our students and giving them opportunities to play. Winning is fantastic. Winning conference championships, going to state, that is all great. But the most important thing that our coaches do is give kids the opportunity to enjoy their high school experience. So I couldn't be more proud of the coaching staff and the athletic department. And to highlight really one record, I mean, the record, the accomplishments are there. I do want to give a shout out to our boys' lacrosse team, who last year, I believe they were 4-12. And Coach Jabaski, his team turned it around. This year, they were 11-5, you know? So I know they wanted to, hey, give us a plug, because we really turned it around, you know? So a big shout out to Coach Jabaski, the lacrosse team, and all the athletes here today. In the pay-to-play summary, I want to highlight one number that stands out. If you look at the first chart under the '23-'24 school year, where it says spring athletes, the total, we had 569 Bulldogs participate in spring athletics. That is the highest in five years, of course, excluding the pandemic years. So again, we are on a roll, we are rising, we are involving our students. You know, athletic department, our coaches, our sponsors do a fantastic job. And to the board, you know, our goal is to increase that engagement. And once everything's settled, we will love, of course, our boys' and girls' bowling program to be approved. That concludes the spring summary and pay-to-play. Are there any question, board members?
No questions. Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
And if I can go to now my principal's report?
Yes, please.
So currently, right now, we're in the heart of summer school. We are running a credit recovery, government, drivers-at-camp, college, bridge tour B, and all the band camps. Session one ends at the end of the month, and then session two begins on July 8th. Incoming ninth graders can still sign up for the bridge tour B, to RB. Under school cultures and operations, we will be participating in the Fourth of July Parade in the township of Riverside and Brookfield. And I have not forgotten about North Riverside. I'm working with my team to see if we can create some kind of schedule. But it is tough when multiple townships have the parade in the same day, but we are working through that. Residency days are coming up in the month of July, so pretty much all the Wednesdays in July, the 10th, the 17th, the 24th, and the 31st. But it is important, people should be approved, then they get an appointment to go to those residency days in July. So if any of our constituents, any of our community members need any help, please come on into the main office, and we will support. In the month of August, we have the Bridge Tour B, which is kind of a crash course on how to be successful here. They kind of go over basic skills in English and math, humanities and STEM, and executive functioning skills. I want to give a big shout out to my assistant principal curriculum instruction, Ms. Kylie Lindquist, for organizing that and the teachers. That'll be 9-12, that's for incoming freshman only, students must register. Freshman orientation will be August 8th, from 10:00 to 11:30 in the main gym. And then August 21st, we will have our open house, 24, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And believe it or not, September will be right around the corner. On the 14th, we will have our homecoming dance at the stadium from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Under activities and athletics for the month of June, we have our summer camps happening right now. Families can still sign up their Bulldogs, and generally, camps are open until filled. So we have also taken day of signups. So it is never too late unless there's a waiting list. And I know sometimes tennis, you know, gets filled because of the limits with the courts. But students are still more than welcome to sign up. We have, to speak in the tennis, we have a couple tennis fundraisers coming up, the 21st, 22nd. There's an RB tennis tournament, singles. I try to participate and have fun in these. A couple years ago, I did get hurt. I was playing a lefty, he kept on going to my backhand, and that was no good, okay? But I am recovered, Coach Weiss, I'll be back this year. July 12th through 13th, it'll be the doubles tournament. August, August 5th is the first official day of fall sports. And in September, the 13th, we have our homecoming game against conference rival Ridgewood at 7:00 p.m. And then we have our dance that Saturday from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Honorable board members, that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. Next up, we have our assistant superintendent's report. Are we ready for that, Dr. Mrs. Matana, or?
I think Liz is here. But you could go through your report, and then we can move on with the agenda. And when she gets here, we could have her go through the new business.
Okay.
Unless she comes in and turns the report.
Sure.
Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with information for, through the month of May, which represents 92% of our fiscal year. Monthly summary report begins on Board Book Page 7. You'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $1,330,142. A majority of our money came from, this month came from property tax and CPPRT. We did get that additional property tax that we were chasing. And then we had 21% come from our evidence-based funding, so our state funding, and then 17% each from local payments, as well as summer camp programs and driver's education. Our total expenditures for the month for our operating accounts were $2,712,353. And we are at 91.2% of the budget. This month, 66% of our expenditures were salary and benefits. 10% were purchased services, and 8% were operations and maintenance. The next report, you'll see the fund balances along with the summary of revenues for the month. And you can see that we are at 99.88% of our budget in terms of revenue, which is very similar to this time last year, which was 99.69. And then on the next page, you'll see that expenditures were 91.2%, which is exactly where we were at this time last year. And then, as always, I provided for the board some, all of the accounts for our board accounts, as well as our activity accounts for the month of May.
So I'm assuming the remaining 9%, 8%, it'd be the June 15th, June 30th payroll. Obviously, it'd be a significant chunk.
Yeah, that'll be a significant chunk. And then we do have bills that are approved tonight, which will go towards the rest of the budget as well. And that concludes my report for tonight, absent of our bond presentation.
I think we'll just move that to new business.
Yep.
So at this point of our agenda, we have visitor statements. Is there anyone here for visitor statements?
I think I saw a few people sign in.
Sign in. So I'm going to go ahead and read the statement I have to read. Our first visitor, please come up. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patrick Williams. I am here as a concerned parent of a rising junior who is deeply passionate about our school's jazz program. I urge you to reconsider the Skengis's administration decision to cut one of the jazz teachers for the upcoming school year. This decision is not only detrimental to the student's musical education, but also undermines the significant progress we've witnessed in the past year. Jazz band and jazz ensemble, though both fall under the jazz umbrella, are vastly different in terms of skill level and instructional needs. Jazz band is open to all music students, providing a crucial entry point for those new to jazz. Jazz ensemble is an advanced group that requires auditions and demands a higher level of proficiency and commitment. Each group necessitates dedicated and specialized instruction to thrive. Last year, with two dedicated teachers, we saw remarkable improvements. Both groups benefited from consistent, focused teaching. Jazz ensemble is an honors capstone class. They performed George Gershwin's Rhapsody in Blue this year, a challenging and historically significant piece. This would have been impossible under the previous and proposed model, where there is only one teacher for both groups at the same time, and that repeatedly leaves students unsupervised. This administration has compared cutting a jazz program to combining an advanced art class. This is a false analogy. Art students can work independently, musicians work together to achieve one goal. At the junior high level, jazz is an extracurricular activity. Incoming freshmen will be, for the first time, in a dedicated curricular jazz program. Two jazz teachers are necessary to get those students to the requisite proficiency level so that all may thrive. By reverting to the old model of one jazz teacher for 30-plus students and two distinct groups rehearsing simultaneously, the quality of instruction will plummet, and the progress we've made will be undone. Students will miss out on the educational experience that comes from consistent, specialized teaching. Our jazz program, which has become a source of pride for our school, will suffer. The music sponsors and students have been coming to you for over a year. We have shared stories of clueless counselors giving students confusing and incorrect information when they are choosing their classes, and an administration whose Byzantine process of sectioning leaves students unable to take the classes critical for their music education. We are then told that enrollment has gone down. It doesn't take a doctorate in education to see why that is. Let's not forget that this decision is being made over an alleged dip in enrollment by fewer than four jazz students. We have watched this board approve requests for funding from bowling teams to multimillion-dollar kitchen renovations while claiming they should be congratulated for the bare minimum for the music program. We are asking a simple question, is it worth it? Is it worth compromising the quality of education and the hard-earned achievements of our students? We have an opportunity here to uphold a standard of excellence in our school. Direct this administration to retain both teachers from the jazz program. Ensure that our students continue to receive the high-quality, focused instruction they deserve. Let's not diminish their opportunities and achievements due to this administration's woeful lack of long-term thinking. Our students' education in future depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. So my name is Susanna Decker. I'm a parent of a rising junior at RB. I've been coming to these board meetings for over a year now. And there are a few things I'd like to express to the board tonight about the music program. At the close of the school year, during the Apollo Music Awards, Dr. Freitas spoke for a few minutes and shared somewhat of the following with students. He said something to the effect of, "For many of you here, music is a part of you, and music is shaping you into who you are." And Dr. Freitas, these were important words and words I know you don't take lightly, and I couldn't agree with you more. So here we are, and I ask myself, why then are we here at every board meeting, trying to convince all of you that music is important and should be valued as much as we value other aspects of a high school education? We've shared our thoughts about staffing and that three full-time teachers are what is needed to fully provide what the students need and deserve. They've continued to ask for it, and so have the parents and the community at large. More than 2,000 have signed a petition, and they think it's critical and important. But sadly, this seems to fall on deaf ears. We've been asking for a meeting with the board to discuss and collaborate, and to my knowledge, we haven't been granted one. Shouldn't there be a two-way dialogue and a discussion about this important issue? Again, it's about one out of every three students here at RB. We've heard from the board and the administration that we don't have enough students interested in the music program to have three full-time music teachers. And I feel like I've heard, well, this is the way we always do things in terms of staffing, and this is how we choose to run classes. We've also heard many stories from parents and students that they've shared with us at all these board meetings, which are in stark contrast from what is being reported by the administration. So I ask the board, are you asking questions about the numbers that are provided to you? About how students are informed about the classes that are being offered? Are you hearing what the community is asking? Do you realize that our school district has a reputation that we are not supportive of the arts? The teachers who have applied for arts positions in the past are glad that they've gone elsewhere? So finally, as I've mentioned before, we have the numbers of students now, one out of every three who's engaged in music and the arts to justify three full-time teachers. And we have droves of kids coming from the theater schools who are involved and passionate about music and want this in their high school. Are we thinking proactively about this and ensuring we are staffed and ready to manage this need and desire of our new students? At the end of the day, I've asked myself over and over, is it about money? I don't think it is. We've watched the board approve funding for bowling teams to multimillion-dollar kitchen renovations. So why are we digging our heels in about properly funding the music program? This is a small investment, estimated at about $15,000 to fully staff our department. We're seeing you make investments in other areas that are deemed important. I urge you all to ask questions, dig deeper in the data, and most importantly, listen. Listen to the students. Listen to the community. They have a desire for a strong music program that makes a difference-
Thank you.
-in their lives now and in their future. Like Dr. Freitas said, it's what is shaping them and making them into the human beings that they are today and for tomorrow. So there's no downside to saying yes to fully staffing the music program. Please take the right step forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. I have, actually, a handout for all of you. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone, my name's Liz Buscio. I have a rising junior and two daughters who graduated, all involved in the choir. I watched the last board meeting, because we were on vacation that week, and I have a few things I'd like to address. At that meeting, Ryan had said that the music department should be staffed at 2.2 teachers if we were to follow RB's class-size policy. And he seems to believe that the Board's doing us a favor by increasing the music department to 2.6 FTE. However, we've been telling the Board for months that the class-size policy for music is flawed. The music caps were arbitrarily set based on the size of the room, not on what's best for the students. And during many other meetings, all of you have heard from experts and educators that certain music classes need to be smaller than others. And yet, the Board continues to ignore this and hold these random class-size numbers. I just don't understand why the Board is refusing to revise that policy and keep up with our surrounding schools. When Dr. Skinkis presented LT's staffing, he failed to mention that LT's music department is supported by a division administrative assistant, an accompanist, a division chair, and an assistant division chair. Our teachers have none of that critical support, and yet are expected to have the same output. And if you look at OPRF, you'll find that many of their music classes run with much lower numbers than ours. They make sure to keep their music teachers fully employed each year, because they recognize the importance of a strong music department that will be ready to handle fluctuations in music enrollment. So it sounds like you're going to be able to find $10,000 for a bowling team, and you're about to approve $2.6 million on a culinary lab. Why is it so hard to find $15,000 to support the music department? And speaking of that new kitchen, have you all talked about what might happen to cooking class enrollment once the foreign language requirement kicks in? I know there's talk of it might not happen, but I've been following the bills brought forth in an attempt to kill the language requirement, and none of those bills have come up for a vote, a vote in the Illinois General Assembly. So when this foreign language requirement actually kicks in and becomes a reality, are you certain we're gonna have enough students to fill two kitchens in this school? Have you guys considered using Triton's underutilized kitchen for our high demand to ensure that cookies not, cooking is not just some expiring trend? My point about the kitchen is that you're so willing to drop 2.6 million for 250 students, yet you won't find .4 FTE to make the music department whole. You have an easy path, path to 3 FTE in the music department. I've given you a staffing plan we presented to you in February. It's completely a reasonable amount, a model that will allow the program to account for the influx of students we expect in the future when our middle schools send their students to RB. Middle schools are bursting at the seams in music. We're getting a lot of students coming in the future. And of the two investments, funding the music department's an easy lift. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hello.
Good evening. I'm Dave Monti, the Science Department. I'm also a former father's parent to both my children. We're RB alum and musicians and choir. This is my final year coming into RB. I've been here 30, this'll be my 35th year. This is the, will be the ninth year of, my mom had you for class, so I'm looking forward to that. But I'm also a community member. I moved into the district in 2008, so my kids could go here because of what a wonderful school RB is. Many of you know I have spoken in front of this Board many times over my career as the RBA president, as the welfare chair, as a teacher, as a coach, as an instructional coach, as the RBF president, and as a sponsor, and mostly as a concerned taxpayer. So again, comments tonight definitely have my brain spinning. But what I wanted to do tonight, instead of talking to you, I just wanted to give you some information. And so I put this packet together about the RB chess team. And the RB chess team had been gone for many, many, many years, probably 25 years, and it's been back for 17 years. And we've had a lot of success over the years. And I just wanted you to have some data as I'm moving forward in my career, because there are a lot of things I'm concerned about. I'm very concerned about the people behind me. But I just, I think the Board needs to see this information, because I don't think the Board always hears everything that is going on. I think there's a lot of things, they can't stand on top of everything. But I wanted to give this to you so that you can look at it at your leisure and maybe have a conversation moving forward. As always, I'm very grateful for all the time that the school Board does, and the intention and efforts that we make for the children and the taxpayers of this district. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you for 35 years. Good luck.
Do we have any other visitor comments before we move on? No? Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda, we've got FOIA requests. Is that right?
Yes. Four FOIA requests. The report is included in the board packet, three from the Landmark and one from Smart Procure. Requests are included in your packet, as well as the responses that we emailed on 5/15, 5/16, 5/24, and 5/25.
Questions about FOIA requests? I think they were, thank you, Marianne, for putting all those together. That was a lot.
That was a lot.
That was a lot, a lot. Next on our agenda, we have district goals update.
Yeah, again, I think it's important for the Board. I did not receive any questions. These were submitted, I would think, as a first read for the Board that I'd asked at. Do you read over them again and be prepared for discussion at the July meeting? I'm looking to see why it's not showing up on my report, but.
Is there one that the administration? I mean, I watched the meeting from last time, and really, the blended learning, that was a riveting discussion that the Board had last, last time. Is there a particular area that administration is going to be focusing on?
Well, the, there's four goals. Obviously, the biggest one, which is day-to-day student attendance, will be the transition from SAT to ACT for all academic benchmarks-
Okay.
...and grade gold. So that will be something we've been working on, the SAT now for more than eight years.
Yeah.
So we're shifting back to ACT, so we're gonna have to relook at our, our intervention classes, as well as our going back and what's the name of the class with the cap? So we took science out of the cap, because there was not a science portion on the SAT. Now, science is back on the ACT, so, or ACT, science is a part of the ACT, so we're gonna be having to restructure that in the future. We're also looking at the MTSS. I'll let Dr. Freitas touch on that a little bit in regards to the academics and the MTSS.
Yes.
So there was a time when we were doing ACT, but we also helped students to take the SATs. Are we gonna have, you know, and that was a while ago, you know, where not everybody chose to take both of those tests, but if they wanted to, they could.
Yes, we still have that.
So will we feel the need to kind, in the transition, kind of run both simultaneously, or?
Well, the school district will only pay for the ACT, and we're gonna probably add to the budget a practice ACT, so that kids have a chance to take a digital practice ACT in the fall before they take it in the spring. As far as the SAT is concerned, there will be opportunities to take those on a Saturday, because they're not required, and kids can still take those, counselors can still help schedule those, or work with students, try and schedule those.
That's gonna be big, another big transition.
Yeah, it's cyclical, right?
Yeah.
So the MTSS and the academic data, Dr. Freitas, if you just really want to touch on the SMARTboard, then the Board can go through this in more detail in July when they're all present.
Yeah, well, what I did want to comment, as part of our district equity leadership team, our Dell, our district equity leadership team, we're gonna develop a plan, and this is, this is hyperlinked here, to support the newly adopted SAT to address achievement gaps and, and help students grow or meet expectations. An on-ask of the Board was to have an academic goal tied to the Equity Action Plan. And with that data, we're gonna bring it to the MTSS team, right? So the team comprised of administrators, psychologists, and counselors will take that data, and with that data, place students accordingly, with support classes, interventions, you know, and this will be a first year, so we have that baseline data, and from there, we'll be able to say, this student is dis-support. We're able to shift around some schedule, possibly do some things in the summer. So again, the MTSS team, right, looks at the data and then takes action for what's best for the student. So that's how we're gonna tie our MTSS process to our Equity Action Plan. But this is really focusing on the ACT, getting that baseline data, and then making sure students have the right intervention so they can meet or exceed. And we'll make sure that we look at any achievement gaps that are there to make sure all of our populations are successful.
So that is the primary, the main focus of our communications person, is we're trying to go live with the website before the start of the new school year, and then look again to focus on the two-way engagement initiatives, also doing some educational experiences, trying to present opportunities like getting parent-student feedback on the residency process to improve the efficiency and the experience, getting some parent universities started so that parents have an understanding of the course selection process or the college, fill out your FAFSA, doing things like that. So that's gonna be a focus in our communication area. Dr. Freitas just touched on DEI, and then Dr. Smithana will be, as the goal states, not only managing the capital projects of the solar panels and the culinary lab, but also continuing to support the initiatives mentioned in the earlier ones. So I would ask the Board to review some of the action steps and the goals, so we can have more of an in-depth discussion in July and approve the move forward, so the admin team can begin to prepare accordingly throughout the summer.
So I just have one question or comment. As we prepare to review the goals, I'd like to ask if you can bring forward, Dr. Freitas, any achievement gaps we have documented using SAT? I know you said you would do baseline data for ACT, but what have we been doing prior to the ACT? And how can we use that data to ensure that while the ACT might be baseline, it doesn't necessarily have to be baseline, right? Because we could translate the SAT numbers or the SAT scores, we could translate those into ACT scores, and I know there's a-
I mean, there is some correlation, but also they're two completely different exams as well.
Right.
But there is some correlation.
The achievement gap is the achievement gap, and I'm sure it's there, regardless of what test we use.
Yes.
So if you could just bring forth that, so that we're not really starting from scratch.
Okay. We'll do, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Any questions about the goals before we move on? Okay. What do we have next? Any additional discussion items? None? Consent agenda.
I did see Ms. Hennessy.
Oh, she's here. Okay.
We have an agenda item, so we can probably go through the rest of these now, and then just get to that agenda.
Okay, great.
So we do want to-
Yeah, I think we can get through the next.
Move forward with consent. Okay, so consent agenda. We'll be approving minutes.
Minutes in the intergovernmental agreement with West Board.
With West Board, yes.
We brought that off last week. Danny?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda item, and approves minutes from the meetings held on May 14th and 28th, 2024, open and closed, and the intergovernmental agreement, West Boardy FY25 Program and Services, as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
And Ms. Yeska?
Yes. Moving on to old agenda items.
Yeah, under Old Business Life Safety Capital Improvements, we have the two supporting documents, the DLAB 133 for a culinary lab project, and a Nicholas AIA 201 for a culinary lab project. The Board's heard about these on a few occasions. These are just supporting documents that are required for the contracts that we already approved, correct, Dr. Smithana?
Correct.
And you are looking to have these approved tonight, if possible?
Yes, if possible. They've been, they were delayed and not provided at the last meeting, because they were still being reviewed by both legal councils, both ours and the corresponding, either DLA or Nicholas's, but all parties have agreed. So it'd be great if they could be approved tonight.
Any objection to approving it tonight?
No.
Ryan and Deanna will be fine. You move forward to that. All right.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the A1A Document B133 with DLA as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
And Ms. Yeska?
Yes.
The next one?
The next one, please.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the A1A Document B133 with DLA as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
And Ms. Yeska?
Yes.
The next one?
The next one, please.
The Board of Education Township High School 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the, wait, that says the same thing. Nicholas and Associate, A1A with Nicholas and A201 with Nicholas and Associates as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
And can we get a roll call, Ms. Nardi?
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
And Ms. Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the tentative budget you referenced earlier.
Yes, so the tentative budget has been updated with the May 31st actuals. Dr. Smithana, any outstanding things that you want to highlight with the Board?
None at this time, other than, you know, this is a kind of a fluid document until we get closer to August and September, and we have more information, and we have our June 30th actuals. So, you know, it will be changing a little bit here and there, but we will post it on our website after it is approved tonight, and then anytime we make changes, we'll post that on our website as well.
So we are asking for the Board's approval. This is the second time the Board's seen it, so that the Board, the administration can begin to pay bills in July.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves tentative budget for FY25 as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Osco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
And Ms. Yeska?
Yes. Next is the girls' and boys' bowling teams, correct?
The Board had this as a first read, and at the last meeting, there was some discussion. Again, the new conference that the high school will be joining has requested for a boys' and girls' bowling team. The board had this as a first read, and at the last meeting, there was some discussion. Again, the new conference that the high school will be joining has requested for a boys' and girls' bowling team. Dr. Freitas has supported a voluntary program for the last two years, so we do have the numbers to support that, and that would contribute to the engagement of the board except for the administration.
Yeah, and I think our engagement has increased tremendously in having a unique area for engagement that captures students that aren't involved in something in another area is a great option, too. It's another wonderful addition.
All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves two new winter sports, girls' and boys' bowling teams for the '24-'25 school year as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, please.
I'll second.
And Ms. Nardi, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Oska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak? Yes.
Ms. Gieske?
Yes.
All right, before we move on to new business, do we want to do the...
She's coming up.
Oh, okay.
So I'll get through A and B pretty quickly.
Got it, all right. Thank you. So new business.
Payment of bills, there's only one question submitted. Dr. Smetana, you want to address that question, please?
This is on page 367 of board packet, it was a question on carrel seating. This is for annual required bleacher inspection for both the stadium and the gym.
Only on-site seating?
Correct.
Any other questions? Nope? Okay.
All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And Ms. Nardi, a roll call?
Mr. Oska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Gieske?
Yes.
Visual image photography VIP contract is for our athletic photos. Dr. Smetana, is this an annual contract?
No, it is a three-year contract. They're our current vendor. This is services cost neutral to the district, and parents have the option to buy team or individual pictures. Additionally, VIP provides several complimentary products to the district and then provides the district with 10% commission on any high school sport sales that net over $1,000. We've been very satisfied with them. This is not something that I would traditionally have to bring to the board, but since we do receive revenue, our board policy is anything over $1,000, as you can see, last year, we received $552. We haven't received the check this year, we receive it in June, but I err on the side of caution, I want to bring it to the board for approval because should we ever, you know, have a really great year in terms of sales, I want to make sure that we're in compliance.
And we've used the VIP for the last several years?
Yes, correct.
So the board can hold on to it, we can put on the consent in July, or this is something that we'll approve tonight, but we do need it before, I would imagine, fall season starts August 5th, correct?
It's either tonight or July would be...
It's up to the board.
Can we just do it tonight?
I have no problem, tonight.
Okay, great.
All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves a three-year contract with Visual Image Photography Incorporated, pending review by legal counsel, as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, please.
Second.
Which one? Bill, Bill Durkin?
And then can I get a roll call, please, Ms. Nardi?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Oska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
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 All right, now.
Dr. Smetana, you want to introduce Liz?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Hennessy, Karen Raymond James, who will review the presentation that I presented at the last board meeting in detail, as well as the next steps of the process. You're welcome to stand, but you're also welcome to sit. Either like this.
That would be mixing.
Thank you. So, is the presentation, is there? Good, okay. So I'll just tell you when to turn the page. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about the issuance of working cash bonds to fund the commercial kitchen project within the high school. So let's go to page three, or page four, we're gonna look at the market update. So what we have here is the dark line is the yield curve where we show for each maturity, years 1 through 30, the interest rate or yield. That is, the yield is on the Y-axis, the years of maturity are on the X-axis, and that dark line, that 30-year average, shows a typical yield curve where interest rates are for tax-exempt municipal bonds. And the red line is where we are today, or as of May 10th, and short-term rates are higher than the historical average up to year five, and then after year five, we've got lower interest rates than the historical average. And the reason those short-term rates are a little elevated is because the Fed has raised interest rates 11 times over the last several years. So that's the thing that's pushing those yields higher. Let's go to the next section, two, financing options. Go to page six. This is the district's statutory debt limit. So the gross debt limit is $58,485,233. The district has $16,150,000 of principal outstanding, so your net debt limit is $42,335,233. So that's the current debt limit. So if we look to the next page, at the bonds outstanding, you see there are four issues. These are the 22, 2017 A are non-referendum bonds, and the 2017 C and 2015 B are referendum-approved bonds. So bond principal repay next, this year, December of 2024 is $5,105, then December of '25, $3,355, and by December of '27, $7,690. So you're paying these bonds off in rapid, really quickly. So by December '27, you will have made the last principal payments on all your outstanding debt. If we go to the next page, this is where we're looking at debt service, so the principal and interest payments. We've got the EAV starting on the left-hand side of the page, then we've got what's called the debt service extension base. This is the limit for the repayment of principal and interest on non-referendum bonds. It's part of the tax cap. Goes back to the year 1994. Whatever levy the district had on the books in 1994 can be extended at that level. In 2009, they added a CPI factor to it. So this is the limitation you have on non-referendum bonds. Okay, so this year is levy year '24, and you have no payments on non-referendum bonds in '24. You do have payments on referendum bonds, '24, '25, and '26 levy years. So you put those two together and you see the total debt service. So in last year, the tax rate for debt was .697 cents on your total tax rate for RB. And then if you go to this year, '24 levy year, it's going to drop by 23 cents if we do nothing, okay, because those last non-referendum bonds are being repaid. That results in a drop in taxes for the owner of a $400,000 home by $252. And then if we continue down, we have a slight increase, and then in 2027 levy year, we, the taxpayer, the tax rate drops by 49 cents, which is $522 for the owner of a $400,000 home. So that, again, is the last payment on those referendum bonds. So that's gonna happen no matter what unless the district goes back to referendum. So this decrease of $252, which a taxpayer would actually realize in August of '25, if the district decides to issue non-referendum bonds after '24 levy year, after they're all repaid, then we're going to have a $252 increase. But if you issue them this year, then we can graduate that decrease so that the taxpayers have more of a gentle decrease instead of a big drop and then a bigger drop four years later.
Or a spike.
Spike, a spike when you issue, yes.
Avoid that during that.
Right. So you can issue these bonds now to fund this kitchen project without increasing taxes.
So this is kitchen and solar panels, correct?
It could be used for any capital improvement. So we talked using some of the fund balance for a kitchen, some of the fund balance for solar, also the loading dock, safety door, so any capital improvements. I think the importances, these are non-taxable, so they have to be used for capital improvements and cannot be used for general expenses like salary and benefits.
Absolutely right.
And I think one of the main reasons with the solar panels, by paying upfront, we realize the greater payback over time, correct? By getting them all installed initially, then we realize those incentives from the federal government as time goes on.
Correct. The issue would be that we preferably would use the $2 million for the, a portion of the culinary lab and other capital improvements. We talked about last week about the capital improvements at the loading dock as well, so that you don't have to forfeit a portion of the rebates. So trying to do the solar panels more out of the fund balance and do the other capital improvements with the bonds would be more sense, so you get the full rebates from the federal government.
Okay.
Correct.
Taxer.
Yes, because the bonds are tax exempt is why the rebate would go down.
Right.
So this way, by moving the money that way, we're gonna realize as much money possible from our federal rebates.
Correct.
Correct, right.
And then we have, so the bonds that are coming off the books in 2027 are the referendum bonds that were approved in 2006, and then there was some refinancing that we did to improve to lower, due to the low interest rates in our approved AAA rate, or AA high, AA plus rating, so that we can save money for taxpayers and we refinance some of our debt. The issue is that some of the 2000s, so the work that was done in 2009 prior to Dr. Smetana and I being here, those roofs only have a 20-year warranty. So 2029, we're gonna be looking at having to replace all the roofs that were done in 2009. Now, and since, since I got here, we've done roofs with a third year, we've paid a little more on the roofs, and we did roofs with 30-year warranty, we're at a hard surface, not a soft surface. So what Ms. Hennessy is trying to show you is, yes, we have a big tax break coming in 2027, but there is going to be bonds that will need to be taken out by 2029 to start the roof replacement cycle for everything that was done in 2009.
Since I've been on this board for 20 years, we have been doing rolling roofs.
Well, it's usually a 20-year or 30-year cycle, right? So now we're gonna have 30-year warranty. So what you can do is set this up so that this step down does a constant decrease for the taxpayers, and the money saved by that, you could do a smaller amount of bonds come '27, '28, do another step. Taxpayers are continuously experiencing a decrease for long past 2027, so you don't come off the books in 2027 with a $500 savings, and then the next year, we have to take out $3 to $5 million for roof's replacement, and then your taxes go up, you know, $500. So we're trying to keep a constant decrease going for the community.
Exactly right. So page nine shows the current situation. Let's go to the next page. Dr. Skink has just covered on page 10, the current capital needs, the commercial kitchen, the solar panels, and the loading dock, and then the roof replacements in 29. If we go on to page 11, the non-referendum bonds are paid through this debt service extension base that I referenced in an earlier slide, and it allows the district to issue bonds without referendum to fund capital projects as long as the payments don't exceed $2,206, which is the debt service extension base. And so we're talking about working cash bonds. They require a public hearing and a petition period. They do not negatively impact the operating funds of the district, and they can help keep taxes on a steady step, stair step down. So let's go to page 12. This is the slide that talks about the requirement that the bonds be used for capital projects and not operating. If they're tax exempt, which is a much lower interest rate, we need to, the district needs to use them for capital projects. You are prohibited from making payments on the operating expenses such as teacher salaries, benefits, or purchased services. So let's go to the next page.
So just to make sure, repeat that again, so like, there was a portion in history going back to 2011 prior to my arrival where there was concerns that they were taking out working cash bonds to fund the teachers' contract. These could not be used for any teacher contract negotiation line items.
Correct, by law.
Ken, we've had a green initiative for a long time. This is seeing that come to fruition, you know, being able to move forward with the solar panels. We've had engagement, so this is really hitting several of our district goals, being able to do this at this time.
What page are you on, Liz? You're going on 13.
I'm now on page 13.
Okay.
So this is the option to fund $2 million of those capital project costs we just talked about, estimated cost of the kitchen, I believe, was $2.5 million, the solar panels, about $1.5 million, so you have to use your fund balance as well. Just issuing $2 million, we're paying it off in the next two years, and it keeps, instead of having a decrease of $252, the decrease is $61 for the $400,000 home. So there still is a tax decrease, it's just smaller. And then the next year, the decrease is about $75, $80, and then that big $500 drop again in 2027. So if we go to the next page, 14, I think the graphic representation shows it best how the proposed '24 debt service on these working cash bonds is under the line in '24 and '25, when combined with the referendum bond payments, you can see how you have a nice, steady decrease in the tax payments for taxpayers till you have that big jumping off point in '27, at which point you'll be thinking about those roofs and funding that, and have the opportunity to do that without a, you know, decrease and then jumping back up again.
Liz, looking at whether it's this visual or go back to 13, what's easier? If I wanted to do like some forecasting for the audience in the watching the meeting or for the tape. If we were looking to forecast so that the community could continue to experience a drop-off, you know, but avoid the spike, a decision would probably need to be made around 20, because the taxpayer experiences the savings in August of '27 roughly?
Yes, well...
The $500 one?
Right, it's going to be in the '27 levy year, but we want to get on to the '27 levy year with a new bond issue so we can make that drop, you know, still happen, but not as large, so we need to really start talking about those life safety amendments in '26. So that, because it takes a time, process.
And if you take the bonds out, you have five years to complete the amendment, so if we put roof replacement, it's a five-year, you have a five-year window to use that money.
Yes, and a three-year, five years to issue the bonds, once you issue bonds, three years to spend it. So you could do it in two pieces, actually, if you wanted to.
But we wouldn't, to get on the levy year '27, we would have until like...
January of '28.
So we want to talk about it in '26, but we don't have to issue it.
I just want to make sure we're laying out a plan so that, the exact same reason we're not doing the 200, or we're proposing to the board, don't do a 252, then go up '29, then go down, then come back up, right? Like...
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, Liz, you want to go on to your schedule?
Yes, thank you. So tonight, just to review, this has been discussed in finance committee, the 14th, the 21st, and then at your board meeting on the 28th.
One more page, Mary Ann, up, there you go.
Thank you. May 28th, I know Kristin did it, did the presentation, and then tonight, we're reviewing these again. We also have on the agenda the authorization of the resolution of intent and the reimbursement resolution, which are items for action that you could approve either tonight or on June 25th. Just want to make sure you get all your questions answered, and once those resolutions are approved, we would publish a notice of intent in the local newspaper, have a public hearing on the 13th. have a public hearing on the 13th of August, approve the bond resolution on September 10th, and then close the bond issue around October 8th, move the money from the working cash fund to the O and M fund to the capital projects fund on October 8th. So that's kind of the timeline going forward to get the money in the right place for the project.
Elizabeth, can you touch on in a little more detail? Because I did not at the last meeting about the second resolution to get reimbursed.
Sure. So passing that reimbursement resolution allows you to look back 60 days at the fees, soft costs and hard costs that you've spent as you move forward with both projects and allows you to pay yourself back from the bond proceeds back to the O and M fund. So it's just a nice option to have for any costs that you've incurred over the last 60 days.
So this is the second time the board's heard this presentation, one from Dr. Smetana and myself, last meeting, and now from bond council. Again, we're not approving to do the bonds tonight. It's just approving the intent to do the public notices and resolutions for reimbursement should they eventually go forward. So it's up to the board to decide to go forward with them tonight or wait one more meeting.
I'd like to move forward because it's just the intent so we get the information out sooner than later and that's available.
I agree. All right. Do you want me to read it?
Yep.
Go for it. All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the resolution declaring the intention to issue not to exceed $2,500,000 of working cash fund bonds, of working cash fund of said school district and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
And roll call, please, Ms. Nardi.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes, please.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Kiesewetter?
Yes.
All right. And the reimbursement, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other, this is the second opportunity for visitor statements? Any other visitor statements tonight? Thank you, welcome.
My name is Monica Blanchard. I live on the North Side. I have one student at RB. I have one at Hauser and I have one at Central. So we're spread and I'm here for the long haul. I was not able to make the last meeting, but one thing stuck out when I watched it on YouTube. And it was the word, we need, well, if we do this for the music families and the theater families, we need to make an exception for everyone. And I don't know, it seems like our music students and our theater students, they're exceptional. They do deserve an exception, if that's what you want to call it. I see it more as an investment. I see it, there's a tidal wave of kids coming into our school and we need to lay a foundation, a stronger foundation for them so they can succeed in music and theater. We need to, we have students that, we have exceptional music teachers. We have exceptional music students. We have a student playing in New York just a month ago. And the one thing about our music teachers is they know, they get to know our children over four years. And I think that's a rarity for a lot of teachers here. They're in and out in a year. The thing about our music teachers is they build a relationship and they are able to unify freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, all with a common goal of putting on a play or putting on a concert. They bring them together for a musical. It's like an all-hands-on-deck. But guess what? We only have two and a half people doing that. The, I'm going to switch lines a little bit. I don't, I'm not as well-versed as some of my colleague peers. One thing in particular that also stuck out, and I don't know if I, just hearing this wrong, because it's kind of like mind-boggling, that we'll have one teacher teaching two jazz bands in two different rooms? Now, if this is not true, I don't know, because it's hard to get answers out of you guys. And we don't, at this point, we don't know who to ask for the answers. It seems like people have been asking for meetings. People have been saying, can you tell me this? But there's no answers. We look at like, no offense, but kind of glazed tired eyes. And it's disappointing. And I think our students deserve more. And I think the message that is being sent is that you are not exceptional. You, you're not worth it, frankly. And they are. I mean, it doesn't seem like, unless, unless everyone's wrong and it's more than this $15,000 mark that I keep hearing. So, and the one thing that I think is the most exceptional at our music department and theater department is that they are doing this without the support of their administration. That they have reached the levels of professionalism that they have achieved. And the kids that are going on to state, the kids that play outside. My daughter had three gigs in one day last weekend. I mean, this is because of their music teachers. This is because of the kids they meet here. These are the relationships they form. And they're also learning to mentor each other. And I don't know if there's that many experiences where they have a chance to do that, where they're mentoring the younger children, the older kids, to just meet like that. So I know it's a little scattered, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Vicki Greco. I'm the mother of two graduates, a rising senior and a rising seventh grader. Gross. And I just want to request the board to consider talking to the music program people and the administration to get a sequence for us to have a sequence of where the kids go from choir, first choir to second choir. And finally, their, what do they call this?
Magical.
The highest level. Because I like how Argo and LT are thrown around like when we're, when we're doing the same things they are. And it's right. But then, when I look at Argos and I say, I look on there, they have three full-time teachers and they have a sequence from recommended orchestra sequence, a recommended vocal music and a recommended band. And they all have a pinnacle that they end with, this honors or AP. And I feel that RB should go that way. That's like kind of a concrete thing. So we don't come here and say, well, we don't have the numbers here. We can only have three choirs. How about, well, if magical should only be 16 and then the other numbers? And I understand numbers, we can talk all day about those. But I think they really should have a quality program and continue that quality program. It's not just about three teachers. It's about three separate sequences of the kids coming in and learning and being utmost in their field. That's what I feel the board should talk about and should stress. Because my son, who is doing here, he joined choir last year and he has loved it and he's been in the theater, but he's also been foods and baking. He's in baking and pastry. And he has learned so much about himself and everything through music that I don't think he'd get in any other class. And I feel like if the board really wants those kids to kind of find their way, they don't just have to come in as a freshman and know it, you know? And so if we had a sequence like, oh, look, you can start this here and then you could get to this point if you start as a freshman, but you can also start as a junior, you know? And I think that's really important. So I really strongly push for a sequence where there is a capstone and there is a, there is a direct path so that we can have the three teachers. Maybe not this coming year, but that would be great. But in the times that would, in the time that we do have. And all my kids have gotten through college and done stuff in college with music, not necessarily as a major or anything like that, but it has totally enriched their lives, okay? And I just, I can't say enough about the program as being very important and the people of the program as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitor's statements? Hello?
My name is Zoe Boulter. I'm going to be a junior this fall at RB. And for the past two years, I've been involved in their jazz band and ensemble, their string orchestra, and two of the music clubs they've been having here, Symphony Orchestra Club and Anamariachi. And I'd just like to say why this matters to me and other students. Because this is a big deal to us. This makes our day going into our music classes every day at school. This is something we're passionate, we're passionate about. If you look at us, if you look at our parents, we've been coming here for over a year at every board meeting. We care about this. This is something that means a lot to us. I feel like I personally have learned a lot through music classes here at RB. And I'm not just thinking about myself. I have two younger brothers. My mom mentioned them. One at Hauser and one at Central Elementary. And they're both planning on pursuing music in high school, too. My brother at Hauser plays violin and I've seen their concerts. I've seen the number of people enrolled there. And it's impressive. Like, we're going to have so many more students. And if you see how passionate we are, there's a whole new generation of us coming. So I just don't understand why you can't listen to us. We're declaring our needs. We're telling you what we would need to be successful. And we've been doing this for so long now. And it feels like we're just being ignored. So I'd also like to touch on the two jazz bands, like my mom and Mr. Williams were talking about. I feel like it's important to have more than one teacher teaching the jazz band because there are so many different instruments. There are so many different types of people taking this. And everyone needs individual attention. If you think about jazz, if you think about all the skills you need for it, soloing and everything, it's important to have teachers who can address those skills individually. And that goes for many of the music classes. It's important to have teachers who know those skills for your instrument or your like talent, like vocals, Ms. Smetana, to be able to address it and help you individually. And I think that's part of what makes the classes so enjoyable, being able to interact with others who know about your interests, who know about this thing that you care about. I know I go into school every day looking forward to jazz band. My one music class this year, or this past year. But it's not just me either. I know many of my peers in other bands and choir care so deeply about this. And you've seen how much they care. They've been coming here and they've been telling you how much they care. So I just don't see why you're ignoring us. At this point, I'm talking myself in circles, so I'm going to end there, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Madala Casey. I have three children in the school district, one of which is a, will be a senior. His name's Vaughn. He is a participant in jazz, jazz ensemble, six-man band. I have a daughter who is going to be a sophomore who participates in a rock band. And I have my youngest, who is in middle school, will be an eighth grader who also is in the music department. He's started actually with Mr. Loeb in Ames in the fifth grade and has had a relationship with Mr. Loeb since he was in the fifth grade. And I just remember when we picked up his instrument, his viola, or they were measuring him, Mr. Loeb is like, hey, Arlo, what's up? I can't wait for you to start. And every time he's, Mr. Loeb sees Arlo, who is not even in high school yet, he says to him, I can't wait for you to be in our jazz band. And my kids, our kids, we encourage our kids to be, to discover, to learn as much as possible, whether it be music, whether it be, you know, any subject. I feel like they have gotten such a universal or well-rounded education within this district. But they are passionate about music. And they have such a strong relationship with their music teachers. And within jazz, my oldest has really flourished in music as a drummer, as a percussionist, as a guitarist, whatever it has been, because these teachers have provided the encouragement, the time, the, not just for my one, or my kids, but for everybody. And to see this community come together for when there is, you know, a recital or so forth, is, we are just completely blown away by the talent, but also for like the love that is shared for music and with, for this department, for the school. There's so much pride. And if we continue on this path, I mean, there's so much that these kids could do. It just, we just really need that third, you know, that third full-time, full-time teacher to continue to provide that. There's, there's a lot going on here. So really hope you guys would consider that. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming tonight. We'll move on to our next, were there any additional discussion items that were requested for tonight? I don't recall, no. Consideration of items for future meetings? Now's a good time to add. If not, we will then move into closed session. Matters for closed session. We, matters for closed session include appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, confidentiality of closed session meetings, or closed session minutes, sorry. Ms. Slapp?
We need the motion.
We need the motion to go into closed session, sorry.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the June 11th, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Durkin. And roll call, please.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ruska?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Oh, the gavel, sorry.
That's it.